Okay. The meeting order is July 15th. Everybody please rise and pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've been deviating a little bit from the agenda tonight, but one of the first things we have to do is we have to swear in Marson Meyer as a new trustee on the village board to finish out my term, two-year term. Would you like to do that now?
I am appointed to the office of village trustee. I have been appointed to the office of village trustee in the village future, in the village future, in the county of Will, in the county of Will, to solemnly swear, to solemnly swear that I will support the constitution of the United States, the constitution of the state of Illinois, and the constitution of the state of Illinois, and I will faithfully discharge the duties, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of village trustee to the best of my ability. The office of village trustee to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Thank you, roll call. Yes.
Yes. Meyer?
Yes.
Ehrhoffs?
Here.
Here.
The approval of the minutes of the previous meeting was June 10th, 2013. Are there any additions, corrections? If not, is there a motion?
Slow move.
Motion made, we're seconding. Roll call.
Clary?
Yes.
Ehrhoffs?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Ehrhoffs?
Coleman?
Here.
Here.
The approval of the minutes of the previous meeting was June 10th, 2013. Are there any additions, corrections? If not, is there a motion?
Slow move.
Motion made, we're seconding. Roll call.
Clary?
Yes.
Ehrhoffs?
Yes.
Meyer?
Abstain.
Coleman?
Yes.
Freylin?
Yes.
Village Board's report.
Board members have a copy, total income received since the last meeting, $449,501.91. So much larger amount because we have an extra week in there for board meetings because we have late meetings this time. We received a very large income tax check this month for $74,000, which was much larger than usual, plus we're getting our real estate tax plan yet still. Also attached is a request from the Knights of Columbus. They want to hold their Tootsie Roll Days in the village on Friday, from Friday, September 20th to Sunday, September 22nd, to raise money for the intellectually disabled. Are there any objections to the request? There's no objections before I send them the letter letting them know they want to be on streets. They have to wear high-profile vests if they want to go through the businesses, they get permission from the owners and those kind of things.
They do understand that we don't want anybody on Route 1?
Yes, unless they get the letter. I always clarify that. No objections today. Also, registration is now open for the Illinois Disciple League Conference in Chicago. Conference runs Thursday, 14th through Saturday, October 19th. A copy of the technical schedule and registration form is attached for your information. If you're interested in attending, please let me know, and I will be happy to make arrangements and support me there.
Any questions? Is there anyone from the audience that wishes to address the board? If now we're going to deviate from the agenda, the first thing we'd like to do is trustee Hart, the planning zoning committee, the motion authorized, the village president, purpose and by resubdivision for Rising Shitty.
The owner wishes to divide this parcel to three separate lots. One of the ones for the Ponson Hut, one for the dealership building, and the third for the vacant parking lot in the north toward Miller Street. Rising would keep the Ponson Hut parcel for storage rental, and the dealership building would be sold for Dollar General. Third parcel would also be sold at the turn as a commercial lot. The concerns expressed regarding the resubdivision is ingress and egress to the parcel using existing drive. I dot District 1 has been very stringent on driveways to close to intersections and to parcels to the north would not have granted access. This resubdivision would provide right for ingress, ingress and egress from the mill lot to lot to the north to resolve this issue. Close was a copy of the plan of resubdivision and proposed site plan for the Dollar General. More details will be provided at the meeting.
The petitioners are here to make their own with their presentation. I ask if you guys come, we'll use a camera at this table here so they can get it from the cameras. We'll tie the turn. I'll let you do the presentation from here.
Okay. So, my name's Neil Pegash from Tyson Engineering, representing the owner. As you described, it is a three-lot subdivision for Rising Motors. We have addressed the ingress, egress concerns for the lots in the north off of Dixie Highway Route 1 with a 40-by-50-foot ingress, egress easement. They also have the existing asphalt entrance off of Miller Street as well for egress. And I think that's pretty much all the concerns that were voiced at the planning commission. This is the, yeah, this is the schematic site plan for the Dollar General for lot number two. Nothing's been, I don't believe anything's been submitted as of yet to the village for approval or anything, but this is the general layout, I believe, what they're possibly looking to do.
I believe tonight Jeff Kimble's here representing Dollar General, Joe Rising representing the owner of the property, and Raleigh Rosenbluth representing real estate involved in the transaction. This is your only opportunity to ask questions about the site plan, about the architecture or what have you, because once this plan is approved, all they need is a building. And I know there was some discussion at the PCC about the Dollar General building itself, what they were going to do, tear off the front, put up a brick facade. Maybe Jeff or somebody could comment on that. Scott, you were at the meeting, you want to take over?
Well, I was at the meeting and I saw that, and I don't know if you want to do your presentation first and then I'll voice one of my concerns, but you can do your presentation.
Well, I mean, yeah, I guess I don't have all that much to add other than I represent the group that's going to acquire the property, has under contract to acquire it from the Risings. And it's our intention to redevelop this property for lease to Dollar General. We have an agreement, a lease agreement with Dollar General. And yes, there will be a new facade put on this building. The rest of it will be updated. I mean, it'll be altered because there are a lot of windows and doors and whatnot for prior use, you know, functionality for that that we're going to alter. The whole thing will be painted, including the roof. And this area right here is where the showroom exists today, and that part's going to come up to turn this into a building that works better for Dollar General, including parking. So, yeah, that's, that's it. Happy to take your questions.
Okay. One thing that we received was a photo of the, like a, a photo, a rendering of the property. One thing that came up in my mind is the lack of windows. And I understand that Dollar General's in the retail business where they need shelf, you know, shelf room and everything else. Is there any way to dress the front of this building up with some type of, because it, there was, you know, there's a couple of other buildings in town where there's not a lot of windows. It just doesn't look good. And I was just wondering if this could possibly be dressed up a little bit.
Well, I could certainly run a by. Yes, they are not, they don't go out of their way to put windows on their buildings. That is true. There, it reduces the space that works well for them for shelving and product placement and all of that. But I think it may be possible to expand windows on either side of the main entrance. If they were to put them there, that's where they would put them, so.
Scott, that's what you and I were talking about. What we're trying to deal with right now, we're on Route 1, which is pretty much the center point of the entire village.
Right.
And we're going to put up a box with no windows but a door. And it's very sterile. It doesn't really give a lot of aesthetics. When Scott and I were talking, right now there's a set of double doors in the very front. It would make more sense if you exposed, expanded that further to have windows on the side and provided a little more of a, more of a dressier feel, because right now it's very sterile.
You mean even if you took, let's say you had the front and realize probably corporate policies probably have as much merchandise space as possible, which I think you indicated that, but what if you had windows higher up?
I can, I can.
Like a skylight block. Yeah, something like that.
I'd love a strip along the top, basically. I can, I can ask about that.
I still think, I mean, that's, I don't think that that's going to fix it. I think really if you expand where that door's at and open that up, it's going to look a lot better than a strip of windows all the way across. Plus, based on, I mean, I used to work when it was Canute's over on the corner of Route 1 in Indiana, and strip a lot, that strip of windows is going to get in the way. You're better off if they have it on the side where the main entrance is at, it's going to look a lot better. Would that take your?
Yeah, that's a thought. You know, it's, it's just that I don't want to, you know, a lot of these stores, like the one in Piattone, which we discussed in the meeting, in Piattone, the building is the opposite way. It's lengthwise.
Yes. That's the prototype.
Right. But this one is the exact opposite. So, the length is on the frontage. And, you know, when you see that, when you drive by, it's just going to be, yeah. So, I do think we should dress it up a little bit, you know, however which way we do it.
The concern I had after that meeting was the access to the north area. Now, are you going to own that property to the north? Is that still going to stay with Rising?
Right. So, if we pull it back to here, I have parcel number two under contract. The Risings will continue to own parcel one and parcel three, and I can't speak to their plans.
My concern is the, what was discussed at the meeting, and that's kind of what Scott was getting at, was if you guys wanted to give your presentation, because most of the board was not at the planning and zoning. So, they're kind of at a loss on a lot of the details that Scott and I were able to hear you guys talk about. The concern I have is the discussion that took place about ingress, egress to the north section or plot one, while there is access off of Miller, it's very limited. And it is very close to the stop sign on Route 1. And when school is in, you're not getting out that intersection, I can guarantee you, because that whole road is jammed with cars because the schools.
This one?
Yes, the schools, the schools' rotation all the way through is from south to north. So, if any parents are trying to get back to Route 1, that section's going to be jammed up. But the concern I have is if there's any semis trying to get in there, what was discussed was, right now there are a set of gates that separate block one from block two, and whatever that double gate was, that will be the ingress and egress for that lot in the back. And if it's a semi, he's not going to make it. He won't make it on the Miller, and he won't be making it back out of there unless they put nothing on that lot. And that's what worries me. By fixing the allowable amount of truck space of getting in there, it won't make it. It just, it will become an unusable lot. I mean, you're going to need to look at that, Joe, because right now, if, if, if this is the way it's going to go and you're locked into that, no semi will be able to pull into that lot and pull back out. Especially if you put a, if you put a gas station there or another small store like this there, it's going to take up most of the, of the property and you won't be able to get a semi in and out of there, especially these long ones that people in. So, it's something you need to think about. But I, I'm really worried about access onto that thing from the south.
Will you lower to lot, lot one? Okay. I think, for the purpose of this meeting, I think we should stay with lot two. But, but I realize what you're saying, that they are connected, they are related, but in a way they're, they're not related. They're here to stop talk about lot two, subdivide it three ways, and whatever happens to lot one, it has to be addressed down the road.
I, I understand it, but as part of this subdivision of these, the ingress and egress out to the north lot is part of this subdivision.
Agreed.
So, I want to make sure that we have an understanding of what happens on that. And I'm concerned that that gate is not going to be enough.
But he doesn't even know what he's going to put on lot one yet. So, a semi might not be making it through the road. He's had truck traffic all around the back of the building now, correct?
Yes.
So, that probably, you know, as far as lot two is concerned, that is addressed. Whatever happens with lot one, we're going to have to deal with lot down the road. Whatever, he doesn't even know what he's going to put there. It may be.
But that's what worries me right now in this agreement of subdivision, is the ingress and egress about lot one is discussed in that ingress, egress. So, it is, while it is not tied to this, it is tied to it because we're making stipulations of the accessibility from the south to that lot.
What you're saying is lot one becomes too small for inefficient commercial use.
I'm concerned that it's going to be landlocked by a very, what I believe, a very small access point into that area. Now, it could be that all those gates go and it's allowed, you're allowed to take a truck through there on a diagonal. It is possibly doable. But I'm concerned that by setting the parameters of that opening in that very small area, that you're not going to make it.
We feel with the 40-by-50-foot ingress, egress easement through lot two, that will give you some flexibility with the design, and that's something that could possibly be addressed in the engineering review when they come out with the site plan. So, I mean, 40-by-50 feet gives you substantial room for, I don't think they're going to have 65-foot semis unloading back there.
On our facility?
No, I'm not worried, I'm not worried about what Dollar General's doing, because he's already planning for what's, yeah, he's already planning for what his expectations are for that lot.
Ours looks for our.
Right. Because you guys have a fixed trailer side.
We've had trucks do false deliveries already. They're fine.
That's, that's just my concern.
I think what Brian's saying is if they build a building in the middle of lot one, that building has to be served by a semi. It's more than impossible with just a Dixie Highway access.
And, and let's say that they put a building there and they put a parking in the back, well, the access to that lot is to the, is to the east. And if they push that building close to the road, they've just blocked off that access.
But that's not a concern of Dollar General's, really?
No, it's not, but as part of it, but what, what you're, what you're going through is agreeing to sign a resubdivision of these lots. And as part of that is the agreement of the accessibility to lot one. That's the problem that I have.
Anything else? I have one thing on architecture. If you flip the plan around, I only want some extra glass, but what would be very cost-effective, wouldn't cost much dollars when they put the brick facade on this building? Can they put a couple of brick bump outs along there, or different colored brick? Is it a big deal?
Yeah, I mean, we can.
Just to break up that long wall. That seems to be the issue.
Or landscaping.
You know, like Target, they'll have the beige wall, then they'll put in a five-foot strip of red, then they'll go 30-foot more beige, then another strip of red, just to break up the solid wall. Yeah. And anti-manus wall is what we're looking for.
That, that is actually easier to accomplish than windows. I mean, yeah, we could, I'd be happy to work with you guys on that.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't have any problem.
It shouldn't even cost much more than putting brick down there, right?
I still think you're going to want that access into there, so it's more presentable. We're not looking at sticking the whole thing with windows. And you're not looking at taking up that much space.
One window on each side plus?
That's what you're looking at. You're looking at side glass on the side of the primary windows. I mean, it's, it's aesthetics 101.
And one other thing that came up is general, Dollar General's, basically Dollar Stores times put merchandise out in front of their buildings, which I think is, or hope for and would agree, we would think that it's not, unattractive to constantly put your product out in front of there. Is there any way to express corporate, then, except for like sidewalk days? I understand that.
Yeah.
But as far as putting their merchandise constantly out in front of the store on a daily basis, I don't think it's easy.
I think as a practical matter for this store, it's very unlikely, because the way it's parked right up to the building, there's not really going to be room to put merchandise and then allow people, ways to access in and out of the front doors. You know, they're going to be going in front of the cars, there's going to be the building, walkways, then the cars, and I don't think there would be room. But in thinking about the stores, at least that we're involved in, I don't, you know, the, I don't see them putting, unless they're taking it out and they're putting it out during the day and bringing it back in at night.
That's what I, I think is happening. We don't have the time to get, I'm not talking about a sidewalk, because I know it's different. I know it's different, it's one of the events, but it was a thought to keep in mind. Joe, do you have a comment?
Well, I was just going to say something about that lot, more of what Brian's concerned about. Those posts and those gates are not going to stay there. You know, the only reason we put those in was because of a theft.
Right.
And that's the reason we did that.
Well, what came up in the plan.
If you open that up, if you take that stuff out, it opens that whole thing up. Dollar General's not putting a wall for the property line. That's because that whole thing is going to remain open. And you, you mentioned a gas station, there's, you know, there's all kinds of rumors. There's no agreement to put a gas station.
There's no idea when it's going to go there, but it could, it could go there.
Could be another car dealer someday. You don't know, you know?
But what came up in the plan and zoning is that those fence posts would stay in place and where the double doors are right now, that's what you would be seeing. So, that's why I was basing it on discussions, again, most of the board wasn't even there. But that's what was, that's what came up during that meeting. And that's why I'm concerned about it having access.
Well, lot one, I mean, like I said, that's, that's down the road. We don't know what's going to go there. We may never sell that property. It's hard to say. You just don't know. But those posts can come out in about 20 minutes. They're not in there very hard.
As long as Dollar General's is, is in agreement with you being able to get more access into that area. That's what worries me. So, I mean, yeah, you've got that access off of Route 1, and it's a matter of moving across that area. The other question I have for, for the guys in Dollar General's, what is your access for deliveries?
Our, we.
Is it counterclockwise or clockwise?
Fifty-three foot trucks, 53-foot trailers. It's the largest trailers actually that are out there. They've done a false delivery. They come in here, they go around the building, the delivery door's right there, drive like this, they, they deliver, and they go right back out there.
So, you're counterclockwise?
Just like parts trucks used to do.
They're a little smaller though. He's looking at semi.
We had semis deliver.
Did you have semis deliver?
Every night.
About two in the morning.
Yeah. Jammed, delivered parts every night. And plus, transport trucks too, they would come around the building too. And they're pretty long.
Looking at that, this picture right here, where is your access off of Route 1?
There's three, there are three access points. There are three curb cuts right here, right here, and right here.
Can you show the old, where, where the old showroom was at?
Yeah, the old showroom, I can flip it over, but it's basically like, it's not quite, but it's about like that.
They're keeping existing curb cuts.
Yeah. So, there, you can see this little smaller scale, but it's right there.
There was a curb cut to the south of the showroom, to the north of the showroom, and then further.
Right, and then all.
They're on the square on Chinyou.
Okay. So, if those are the three curb cuts.
Yeah.
On that lot.
Uh huh.
Where are the curb cuts for lot one?
Lot one has no access to Route 1.
But it has curb cut, actually, lot one, if we flip back to this, there's curb cut on the Miller they were talking about. Then it has an access easement here. So, they would be utilizing this curb cut here.
Which is the same one that's on?
Dollar General, the north side, yeah. Yeah, it's our northernmost curb cut.
It's the widest curb, isn't, Joe, isn't that the widest curb cut on that area?
Yes. It is. It's about 40-foot curb cut, the other two are 30s.
It's the widest one, that's it.
So, if someone did purchase lot one and they needed to make a delivery, could they come through lot two to get to lot one?
There's going to be, they're not selling me lot two unless I record an easement that runs through the land that provides, you know, as long as these two are owned by two different parties and they don't eliminate that easement, that there's a permanent easement right here that allows this property to access Dixie Highway through this easement.
Now, Jeff, you said you're leasing this to Dollar General?
Yes.
Do you do it? How, what's the length of that?
Seven years.
Ten years.
And they have, let's see, they have five, five-year options.
So, it's 35-year tour? So, you're locked in for 35?
They could take 35 years, yeah.
But they're locked in to 10?
But they're committed to 10. Their term is 10 years.
So, are you tearing down the existing building that's in the back?
The only part we're tearing down is the showroom area. And then we're redoing the facade, the front of the building, and painting everything else, including the roof, doing a fair amount of work to the interior, new floor, new HVAC system. Yeah, quite a bit of work, quite a bit of.
You have the core four.
No, I didn't.
No, Scott, you guys don't. I think it's the shop, the shop area. Those are passed down.
The brick facade is the front only?
Yes.
The elementary walls are?
It's, it's going to remain the siding that's there, but it's going to be painted Dollar General's color.
The garage doors will be removed?
Yeah, the garage doors are all going to be removed. The one facing to the north is actually, that's coming out. I guess actually they're all coming out, putting new doors in.
Anything else, Scott? Do you also have any questions? So, what I heard before you went on the slide is you're desiring a little bit more windows by the doors, some offset brick or colored brick changes to break up the manus wall, and some commitment on the part of Dollar General to put stuff out in front of the building and everything, which was a concern, although sidewalk days are different, you know, there's motion. Is that what I understood? Everybody agree? And is that in the, will that be in the, will that be in the motion then? Should we call it out?
I just don't know what I can.
Oh, okay. Motion, yeah. No, make sure if contingent has. Four.
Eric, can you fill those items, Ken?
Okay. A motion should be made to approve the final plan, subject to some extra windows by the doors, either some brick offset or different colored brick to break up the manus wall. Let's put in the motion, common egress and ingress and egress from the northernmost entrance even though it's recorded that way to make that a condition. And material cannot be displayed outside of the store daily. Can you live with those?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, I'm going to go as Dollar General.
Okay.
I'll find out.
It can't be too bad. I mean, really the cost part of the windows.
I mean, look, there is the only issue I see, is we have negotiated a lease. I haven't signed it because I don't have this ready. I was planning to sign it tomorrow. Now I have to go back and, because the lease includes very detailed documents on the construction side, and they've got the same, they've got the same rendering that you've got. So, now I need to redo the rendering, take, add some windows. The window package is theirs. They've got to tell me if they can afford that. And they might, I, I don't know. I, I.
You don't.
I can live with it, but I don't, I don't know what they'll say.
See, the, the problem with this building is usually the typical Dollar General, someone mentioned it, the short side's facing the frontage. Here we have the long side facing the frontage, just because that's the way the building is. Yeah, and he, he said that the windows and the bump outs would be subject to the mayor's checkoff.
You're saying bump outs? Do you just mean a change in the?
Changing colored brick. Not this wall. Some people decide they want to do it with an offset brick that sticks out.
They look like coins.
Creates a shadow.
It's kind of a coin where you'll, you'll have a flat wall and you'll have coins sticking out and a flat wall. It breaks up the flat wall.
If I can offer you a suggestion, if we stick to the plot of subdivision that they're asking for tonight, make the motion to approve that, and then between Bob, I, or whoever, you, Gail, whatever, we understand the concerns of the board, and then we will work with the company to try and resolve those issues.
we understand the concerns of the board, and then we'll work with the company to try and resolve those issues.
You're afraid you might lose Dollar General based on a tight one?
I have that thought. And I don't know if that's your consensus of the board, it's certainly not mine, but I think, I understand what the petitioner is saying. I don't think maybe he realized that part of the process, that this is the only chance that the village board has to say about this particular issue. And obviously, you know, they voiced their concerns, I don't think they're that bad of concerns that we could basically work with the Dollar General Corporation and come up with and try and address your concerns. You know, if you wanna leave it to the three of us, somebody else, whatever, rather than.
I mean, there were concerns expressed, and I understand where this location is, but Dox is much different.
I know.
Bob, it doesn't make, I mean, a mistake made earlier doesn't make every mistake right.
Right.
You gotta start thinking, you know what, we probably could've done that better also. And you're right, you're on route one.
We worked with apps quite a bit too before the building went up.
I mean, the problem you have right now is, this is going so aggressive. Do you consider sales tax incentives to get changes made to the building, like we did with Dox? You paid forty grand for that wall. And I think that's where the mayor was wrong.
Yeah, I ask that you consider making the motion to approve the plot of subdivision, or we'll work with the corporation in some manner or way.
Yeah. For whatever it's worth, like, a change in color for the brick facade that we've got, I know that's no issue. In fact, I can almost do that, I can just call Renee, who works directly for Dollar General, he's the construction manager. I'd be stunned if he didn't say yes, that's fine. If I've gotta bump it out, and I've gotta talk to the guy who's providing me the construction estimate, and get a sense for, you know, what's involved there, that also probably isn't such a big deal. The windows, I'm gonna work on it, I'll work on it first thing tomorrow morning. I'm not quite sure what I'll be up against for that, but, yeah. That's kinda my sense of the.
I'd be surprised if they would have a problem with the windows, because you're not looking at putting large windows inside.
I think you're probably right, I think you're probably right.
I mean, if anything, I mean, if Dollar General's having a problem with that, it's making their building and their business more aesthetically pleasing for people to go into than going into a box.
Yeah.
Any one like to make any type of promotion, whether approved or denied? Somebody's gotta do something here.
I personally would like to see the new rendering prior to even doing anything with this.
The one thing that was brought out, and I realize maybe this is not the board's problem, but the consideration, they had a timeline that we were trying to follow. And at the one meeting, that's why we expressed that particular night, that was actually one step we missed, which is basically coming before the board, going back to planning and zoning, and coming back to the board. And tried to skip that first step of the timeline, which is sort of redundant.
Well, the advantage of, and again, I understand it's an aggressive path, it's understandable, you're trying to get this thing closed. But, it would've given you the chance to get some opinions from the board, to update the rendering, to get to that point to say, guys, this isn't gonna work right now, we don't know what's gonna work.
But the board could've came to the planning and zoning, maybe a definite report time.
But this wasn't given out, it was only given to the planning and zoning members.
The village board could've came to the planning and zoning that night to address that was given out.
That's why this, this was only given to the board members of planning and zoning.
I realize that.
And I was, I had a copy of that.
But that is why all petitioners need to come to the board first, that's why we had it set up.
Okay, that's a different issue, but it's the pleasure of the board, and it's a different issue. I think we don't have to beat this to death. Make your motion, if you want to table it, make your motion if you want to approve it, make your motion if you don't want to approve it.
I guess the only thing I'll say is that rendering is not a binding document. You know, all we're looking to get approved tonight is that the subdivision conforms to the zoning regulations of the village feature. I think we've addressed the ingress concerns for lot one. So, you know, through your code review process and building permitting process, I think, you know, I think that could be addressed.
Absent this part of subdivision, there's still an permanent issue for this, because it beats all the codes. You just have an opportunity with the fight to express your views regarding the appearance of building. What does some different can do with this, are there any of the docs, or the nursing home, which we're saying?
I think I'd like to make a motion to table this until the next meeting, so we can see subdivision renderings, and you can get the information from your corporate office to see if they would even consider making any changes to this.
Motion unafforded, table it for a second. Second made. Any questions to the motion? Roll call.
Really?
No.
Holman?
Yes.
Meyer?
No.
Aaron?
Yes.
Larry?
No.
When is your meeting with Dollar General? When does this need to be signed?
Well, I mean, I have the lease ready to sign tomorrow. The lease, they've finished all their stuff.
But what is the deadline that you're working towards?
I'm working towards, my deadline would be to close on this by, you know, say, certainly by the end of August, so I can begin construction in September, so I can deliver to Dollar General by January one. Those are my deadlines. As far as how it would impact it tonight, if they got tabled, well, I mean, I'd have to work, we'd have to.
Motion to table was denied, so it's still on the fourth night.
So, I'm waiting for the key bone.
I'd have to, I mean, I'd have to work with Rising to see if they would extend the contract period so we could get through this part of it. I guess that'd be my first step, then I would go to Dollar General to see if they would revise the lease, which has been approved. See what they're willing to do. And amongst the items, I guess at this point, is I'd have to push back the delivery date. That one they'll be the most sensitive to, but, you know, I haven't signed the lease, so, maybe it'll do.
There are a lot of motions unafforded.
I make a motion. Approving and authorizing the corporate president to sign and apply a resubdivision of the Rising village property with the following conditions, that the glass around the doors, brick offsets, however that's gonna be established, common egress and ingress into lot one to the north, and no merchandising outside, be evaluated based on the final discussion between the village president, the village representatives of planning and zoning, and the village administrator.
Is there a second on the motion?
Sir.
Questions to the motion? Clear.
I think I have a whole take. I was gonna give the exact one.
Motion unafforded, second, I don't know, any questions? Roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Aaron?
No.
Meyer?
Yes.
Holman?
Yes.
Waylon?
Yes.
Motion carried. Will be attached.
Okay.
You have a vote for me to?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, we're standing this one.
Okay, the agenda, public safety, trustee Coleman, the presentation from Dr. Roskine.
Yeah, taking in security at the Beecher High Schools, Dr. Sandy Roskine has to present to the board an update of the safety and security measures being taken at the schools as a result of Sandy Hook incident last December. Dr. Roskine?
Thank you. Okay, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My goal is to provide you with an update of our school's security and safety. As you know, Beecher School District has worked with the Beecher community agencies regarding school safety. Prior to Sandy Hook, Beecher School District met annually with the village, the police, and the fire departments, and also hosted our required drills by the state of Illinois and the regional office. Since the December tragedy, we've expanded our school's safety initiatives. And through this partnership with the village, the police, the fire department, and Washington Township, we have focused our efforts on a continuous improvement of our school and safety. So, these are some of the things that came out of that meeting. We have annual trainings with the police and the fire departments within our buildings, so that allows them to become familiar with all the incidents of our buildings. There's additional trainings for the school personnel, and that includes teachers, custodians, secretaries, administration, bus drivers, by the police, and also by other safety professionals, so we've increased that. Our facility improvements have included upgrading our camera systems to digital camera systems. And we are also in the process of installing two vestibules, I call them Sally cords, that's the enclosures like they have at the junior high, where you go through the first door and you have to wait before you go through the second door. We are installing those at the elementary and the high school because they don't have them. Our bids will be approved next week, because that's the bid opening. A security audit has been conducted through the Beecher Police Department, and we will be reviewing those recommendations for additional improvements. The state has just passed a law that now requires additional drills, and the new drill is called an active shooter drill. And so, we're gonna be required to do that. This drill can be conducted with staff only, or with staff and students. Okay, at this time, our plans are to conduct the elementary school with only the staff, to work that through, because it would be a full active shooter drill. The junior high and high school, the drills will be conducted with both staff and students due to their age. Notifications will be sent out to parents about this new drill requirement. Additional police presence has been at our schools, which has been developing good relationships as well as improving our safety and our communication. So, at this time, what I wanted to do was thank the village president, Mr. Lowen, and Mr. Sananski, village manager Bob Barber, public safety commissioner Coleman, the police chief Weiskirger, everybody's here, except Lieutenant Ederson's not, fire chief LeJess, and the Washington Township representative for our partnership. Because of this partnership, it has improved our safety and the presence and perception of feeling good, which we are feeling safe, of the students, staff, and community. And thank you for collaborating and coordinating with us. Do you have any questions?
Questions for the board?
I'd just like to comment on the cooperation from Mrs. Roskine, the police department, fire department, in getting this moving and keeping it active. I know this is summer, things are supposedly quiet, but fall is coming, and I sure appreciate your cooperation, like I say, everybody involved. This is very near, I'm near to my heart, and God bless you for what you're doing.
And thank you, we can continue to do this.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Back to the ordinary things. Reports to the village commissioners, communication commissioner, trustee here.
The flowers have been planted, and we're gonna be having a meeting in the next.
For the drive, commission, trustee Coleman.
Yeah, Fourth of July went very well. I think due to the fact that we had excellent weather, car, raffle tickets went excellent. Most of our booths, food booths and everything, everybody made out well. I think, as the police chief will report, very few of any incidents at all during the four days. Also wanna thank Public Works and all those involved in the cleanup of the area. I've got a lot of comments on the beautiful park and the fine little country setting that we have here that remains in Beecher, which has been lost in many other communities. But, all in all, very successful Fourth of July. Thanks to everybody involved.
Thank you. You, the commission, anybody have anything for trustee first? And I don't think they had splash park last Saturday, right? I don't know, but Friday?
This weekend.
It's this weekend, okay. So, nobody has any for river hall, commission, trustee Will?
Okay, we had groundbreaking this last Saturday, it was part of the Tractors for a Cure. They're totally separate, we're on our own, it's not a joint venture. But during that day, we had our groundbreaking at ten o'clock. We had quite a few people there, I mean, it was, it was a nice day, we had pictures taken. So, we're officially moving forward on the monument. So, I just talked to our treasurer tonight to find out the dollar amounts. We're starting to mount our dollars, but it's still starting off a little bit slow. We need some big corporate sponsors and different things like that to help really get this going. I think our balance right now is forty-seven hundred. So, Saturday alone, in the post office, there was close to seven hundred dollars' worth of donations, and also brick orders and everything else. So, we're hoping that things really pick up and we get going, and we have the groundbreaking, we really wanna get it, keep it moving. So, we have a meeting this coming Thursday at six o'clock, I believe, and we'll keep on coming along. Any questions?
Thank you. Finance and administration committee, trustee clear.
Welcome to the show.
Right, thank you. I know I don't look quite like Nelson.
Thank you.
I'll do my best to, to, to. He closes your report, I believe I've basically mimic what Nelson had been doing. A little bit of a facelift on a few things, but we'll start with our account balances. I think what we're showing here is a slight decline from the month previous, but similar or a little better than the year before. And that's the Urquoy paving expenses came through during the month. So, that was a good product check of the flight, and I think we're completely tank for that at this point. Also enclosed is the list of bills that were approved outside of the village's system. Offline accounts, we started to call them, based on the auditors, who do look at these also along with village yield. So, I don't think it's any surprise that there's mostly Urquoy or payroll, even these expenses. And enclosed, maybe something a little new, is a graph there of our total dollars. It's a year and a half graph, and what I'll do is just roll the month, I'll drop off the old and add the new. It's just gonna give you a little snapshot of how we're doing compared to last year, and how we're doing here as far as, just a general level. Obviously, it's a mixture of money, some of it's committing money, some of it's money that we wouldn't necessarily have a handle on doing anything with, but it gives you a general idea, I think, just to help. So, I'll continue to do that. If there's any suggestions you guys have, things you haven't seen or would like to see, or any enhancements, let me know, it was really a package for you, it is a part of my job per se, it's more trying to keep you guys informed what might be going on financially. So, if there's anything you need, let me know, I can include that. I don't know if you want to go over, or else I could be, we didn't sign.
I have a question. I need to answer. I have a question, how's it feeling to steal the mayor's desk?
There's a lot of wisdom still left in it, believe me. He didn't take it off.
He didn't take it off.
But if you don't have any questions, that's, if we're gonna go over.
Yeah, don't go too far.
Okay.
We'll jump down to that after this. Any other comments to the treasurer? I make the motion to approve the treasurer's report for the month prior, for the physical activity of the month prior.
Second.
Motion for every second, any questions to the motion? Roll call.
Really?
Yes.
Holman?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Yes. Aaron's reports are also attached for our review from the preceding month. Bills were sent to us, I didn't see anything bolded talent, Bob, does any of you? No, I shut it off in the evening on Friday, because of the late delivery. Right. Kind of bills that came in, they were from the hopper from next month. The only large bill that came to surprise, we had some large amounts of work done on the ninety-five international. I think that total was about seventy grand, wasn't it, Clark? Bud's? The J.D. Miller bill for seven thousand, that was on the ninety-five international. Yes. I noticed also that there was a tow charge for the police vehicle? What was that on? What was wrong with that vehicle? It blew a hose when they were at training, and I know Emerson had called me about that. They were out of town, so they had to have it fixed wherever they were at. Well, they hadn't towed over, no, they hadn't towed back to the village. Oh, did they?
We had it towed to Becker's, they didn't know what the problem was at the time. Unfortunately, it was just a small, it was like a radiator, some sort of heater hose or radiator hose. The fix wasn't expensive, but the tow was, because it was from, I believe, River Grove.
Yeah. What I did notice is Becker's bill wasn't in the bills, though.
He turned them in today.
Okay.
Or Saturday.
Okay. Do anything. Any other questions concerning the bills? I make a motion to approve the bills in a total of two-hundred-three-thousand-four-hundred-nine dollars and thirty-four cents.
Second.
Motion made in second. I, trustee Will, any questions? Roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Holman?
Yes.
Waylon?
Yes.
The audit has taken place, the fieldwork is, I think it's completed, isn't it, Bob? They're coming back for one date, we're doing. So, we should have something, the audit is targeted for completion and presented to us by the meeting in October, so, just for, to keep you aware of what's going on. I do wanna kinda jump down item six before we get into the other item. I do want to kind of jump down item six before we get into the other item. Kim, this is the treasurers. One of the issues that came up is concerning the transition of the commission treasures. We had passed an ordinance giving the commissions the right to have their own treasures. The concern, based on Kim taking over for Nelson and working with the auditors and realizing the amount, that the auditors do pay attention to the information that they're provided, is they're very used to, now that they've kind of ingrained in the law what we do, and although they do not like some of the stuff that we do do, which is our loan to ourself, which I've informed them many years ago that it's not going to change. Having all of our bills or our stuff presented to them is going to make it easier for every additional audit. So any commission that wants to be their own treasurer can do that, but they need to still follow the same constraints that the village has to make sure that the audit process is as seamless as possible for the auditors. And also, it's going to make it a lot easier for us. So Kim and I have had a few discussions about this. He's also provided a memo with some details. It's a two-page memo and a, some guidelines for the commission treasures. We're not saying that the treasurers or the commissions have to have the treasure. They can still use the village board or the village treasurer to do it. The one we believe is probably going to be, the one that sits by itself, is going to be the Fourth of July commission for the fact that the treasurer's doing more than just the treasurer's functions. They're more like a budgeter than anything than a treasurer. There's a lot of work that's there. So while we say that Nelson was the treasurer of the Fourth of July commission, it's not a standard treasure that you would have, like with beautification commission and youth commission. It is a bigger issue than just watching bills in and out. There's a lot more going on there. So it made sense, they still keep that as an entity by itself, but if it turns out that the commission rolls over and gets another person in place of Nelson over time, they're going to still need to abide by some of these requirements of using the similar type programs that we use at the villages for their treasury functions. So it's more of an awareness of what's going on. Kim has talked into Jonathan. Jonathan's still probably going to follow the process of going through the village treasure. When we provided them petty cash that allowed them to get through some of those bumps and minimize some of their issues. Nelson, what was our normal turnaround time of those checks that we were writing?
About forty-eight hours.
Yeah. They were very quick, so it wasn't like we were holding on to this, but the issue came up that when John would get the check, he, a lot of it's going to be his availability to get to the village hall, get with the person, and it's more of a synchronizing nightmare. I mean, he's got to literally be in touch with everybody, and like, right now, he's not even here because he's busy with work. So petty cash kind of let them get through those issues, so even youth commission may not be initiating their own treasure. They may still be using the village treasurer for that function. But this is more to get everybody to understand what's going on. If a commission wants to do their own treasurer functions, they can, but if they do not want to go through the village, they need to follow the constraints that are going to be applied, and it's not in here, out here. If you're in, you're in for the long haul. So it's more of an awareness that the board knows what's going, excuse me, going on. If you have any questions, you can, well, if you have any questions, ask Kim and myself right now if he has had it right now. Otherwise, just let us know, and we can kind of resolve this. Kim, anything else you want to add?
No, I think you summed it up pretty well. I think your ordinance that you passed previously dictates that treasury would be dispensed to the committees, and I, I don't think, or to the commissions. I think that's a big burden to put on a lot of little commissions, and I just don't think that's something we should follow for continuity with the auditors, especially after discussion with them. With the exception of the Fourth of July, which will remain on the same systems as we do today, so it'll be seamless to the auditors who's really doing it. I think we should put in wording or change the ordinance so that it allows us to maintain it at the village. We were told we're responsible for those committees. We have the same F.I.E.N. number, we have the same insurance of relevance, we have the same, the board that appoints those groups, so we own those commissions. We can't divorce ourselves from them just by putting treasury function in there. So I would, I would hope that the commissions would look at that as a relief and not need to staff that position internally, like I said, with the absence of the Fourth of July, so that would be my recommendation.
One thing that I understood you corrected too is basically you want it to stay the way we are and the way we have been for years, correct?
Yes.
Okay. But Brian, you made a comment, and it sounded like to me that you were going to give a choice, and I don't think we should do that. Either we, everybody does it one way or everybody does it the other way, one way or the other.
Well, the issue you have right now is the ordinance that we passed says it resides in their hands.
So I believe what we're saying is we have to go back and change our ordinance.
The difference is Fourth of July is that one...
You can't say that, Greg. All for one, one for all. You're going to have to each commission differently because Fourth of July...
I understand Fourth of July has its own handle, so...
But it's commission.
What I'm asking is, is that do we have to change your ordinance now, quite with what Kim is asking, if what Kim is saying?
No. It wasn't an option. Unless Kim is needing the commission treasurer.
How about this, we review and decide if we have to make a change.
Yeah. We should look at that. Next item in front of us is concerning the resolution repealing, as the president has indicated in the last meeting, repealing Streets and Alley's Committee and the Sew and Water Committee and creating the Public Works Committee and the Economic Development Committee, Economic Development and Community Relations Committee. This was discussed at the last meeting, so I make a resolution repealing the Streets and Alley's Committee, Sew and Water Committees, and the, in creating the Public Works Committee and Economic Development and Community Relations Committee.
Two thousand thirteen dash fifteen.
Second. We have the second.
The motion under four and every second. Any questions to the resolution? Roll call.
Willing?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Claire?
Yes. We received a report from the energy company that the community is using. There has been nine-hundred-and-forty-eight megawatt-hours of power generated from renewable energies for, as of two thousand and twelve. So we'll keep you aware of that as we get information from the supplier. Did you want me to do the next one? Very good. The next item is concerning a resolution for the appreciation and recognition of Nelson Collins for the twelve years of service as village treasurer and his many years of service to the Beecher community. There is a motion that, you want me to read it, Greg?
I'll read it if you want. I want you to make a motion.
Okay. I make a motion for the resolution of appreciation and recognition of Nelson Collins for twelve years of service as village treasurer and his many years of service to the Beecher community.
Twenty thirteen to fifteen sixteen. That's fourteen, because I had to sign one.
The motion under four and there was a second. Any questions or a motion? Roll call.
Clearing?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Fire?
Yes.
Willing?
Yes.
And if I could have...
Nelson?
And Fred Zell. We'll have to.
One last time, Nelson part of this. Yeah, I guess.
And I just noticed Nelson must have typed this since the pot was so small. Do you want me to read it?
I have it here if you want it.
I got it, I got it.
Oh, it is small.
Resolution of appreciation and recognition to Nelson Collins for twelve years of service to the village of Beecher, Illinois, as its village treasurer and for as many years of service to the Beecher community. Whereas Nelson Collins was asked to serve as village treasurer by former village president Paul Lowen at a very short notice on May first, two thousand and two, and whereas since that time, the village's accounts have more than doubled in value and increased in number from eleven accounts in two thousand and two, twenty-five accounts in two thousand and thirteen. And whereas Nelson Collins led the village into the digital age by introducing electronic fund transfers, a second set of ledgers, Excel spreadsheets, and very small funding. The collection of payment fees and changes in account balances and monthly authorizations are transferred by the village board. And whereas Nelson Collins also managed several million dollars of village-issued debt during his appointment and was successful in refinancing two loans and the advanced payoff at two additional loans with cash reserves, saving the taxpayer at the village of thousands of dollars in interest payments. And whereas Nelson Collins was instrumental in advising the village board in the fall of two thousand and seven of the need to cut expenditures and track revenues in response to the impending economic crisis facing the nation at a time when many other communities were operating under the status quo. With such prudent action resulting in an increase in the fund balance of the village of Beechers operating accounts during the financial crisis. And whereas Nelson Collins chose to retire from the position of treasurer to pursue their opportunities after more than forty years of service to the Beecher community, which included the Beecher School District, two hundred U., Board, the Beecher Economic Development Authority, the Beecher Planning Commission, the Will County, Kier Regional Development Authority, Washington Township Supervisor, and the Will County Land Conservancy, now therefore being resolved by the present order trustees of the village of Beecher, Will County, Illinois, that this resolution of appreciation and recognition be authorized and granted to Nelson Collins for as many years of service to the Beecher community, more specifically for his twelve years of service as village treasurer. I'll read it again. Nelson, please, we saved a plastic. This is for the press who doesn't show up. On your own tape. Oh, I'm sorry. Appreciate that. Appreciate that.
Thank you. At this point, Mr. President, are you recessing the meeting for fifteen minutes?
There are motions to recess for kicking coffee.
Remove.
Roll call.
Willing?
Yes.
Fire?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Willing?
Yes.
You're ready?
Do we need a motion to recommit? Make a motion to recommit?
I make a motion. Second.
Any questions then? Roll call.
Clearing?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Fire?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Mr. President, that is my report.
Public buildings and property recreation, trustee Will.
All right, we have the park signage, I think that's been ordered. We're still waiting for them. We're going to get that up, and then we're going to work on park rules. That's our next step.
We have some generic rules that we put up.
Yeah.
I talked to Scott. I'm like ninety-nine percent sure that we have the name of the parks and their addresses, and then we'll implement, you know, with a separate draw through the signs together, all two of them together, but we're getting clarification with the rules.
Yeah. All right, so that's done, and then I have to schedule a time for Bob and myself to go around and do our safety check. So we'll have that done in August, which is cooler. Before the end of August, we'll do our...
Sort of kind of...
Yeah. Yeah, so we're going to do it on that notice, and that ends my report.
Would you be willing to call a committee? And I think it could be a providing committee meeting because you and Gail share of your committee for the parks about the park's rules that you mentioned, the application process you ran to above during this, within the last couple of weeks. And then maybe at that particular point in time, we can let you correct Beecher Rec on the Fourth of July, get that all taken care of, as we said, we'll be done after the Fourth.
Okay.
And we can do that immediately, and have that posted so that I can attend that.
Is that about there's a car stand or whatever?
The car stand, the ad, I'd like to talk about the beer stand. Talk about it at our level first, and then obviously we have to go back to the Fourth of July commission, but there's a couple topics to talk about. Want to do that?
The other item, the other item on that's got is, I think Tractors for a Cure is going to be those same weekends, so we need to make sure that, that to me, Thursday, right now Beecher Rec wants full capability of getting into the park, no matter what it is, and if you've got somebody who's already got their reserve, they're going to need to work around the requirements.
Yeah. Tractors for a Cure, as their date already said, okay. Yeah, he announced it Saturday night.
The only problem is that we haven't approved it, nor have we had an application out the announcement. And we have some issues that we need to discuss that we aren't even aware of yet.
Right.
So I think he's a little premature, but that's something we need to talk about.
Sounds like it's a Saturday after the Fourth again.
Yeah, that, that does really want to have resources when he hasn't that close.
Yeah.
I mean, man.
Yeah. I think people are out of looking.
Right. Not speaking for him, but I think things were down because of that. But if I'm not understanding, I believe that he may have this timeline because of his...
Rhythm photo?
The Run for Life.
Oh, Relay for Life.
Relay for Life.
He does Relay for Life, and then coincides with that part of his charity.
That may be the reason why he has this timeline, which if timeline, a timeline, I don't think is a real big issue that's up to him. It's just that we have other things that we have to talk about with him before we...
Now, I want to get back to the question. Did you say Beecher Rec had plans for the park after the Fourth?
No, 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 no. What I received, well, everybody received an email from the village that, you know, Beecher Rec was having, they wanted full exclusive rights to the park for their needs, and I sent an email back and said, well, Tractors for a Cure has theirs going on, and I don't know what they're going to need for setup. So evidently, they were only doing it Monday through Friday, and he's on Saturday, so there was no conflict.
Where did that email come from?
It came from Julie. She had sent it to the entire board to let everybody know.
I didn't get it.
Oh, yeah, and I responded, yeah. I responded back for saying, hey, we have a commitment for Tractors for a Cure during the span.
Beecher Rec asked for the park after the Fourth?
That week of the, after the Fourth.
Right after the Fourth, and I said, we've already got a commitment, so that you, we've got to worry about conflict.
I don't know if they go on an application or anything.
It was just an email.
Yeah. But bottom line is, we need to resolve some of these things, including that, what you're talking about, so. Okay, and a report?
Yeah.
Planning, building, and zoning?
Building Department Monthly Accord, total force building monthly for our review. Other results for June twenty-seventh, I need zoning commission meetings. Can you give us an update on that since that was in place?
Planning commission basically talked about, what we talked about in the beginning as far as the Dollar Store and the subdivision and different things like that. I think other things that were planned was, or talked about was the village planner, you know, position. We also talked, or they also talked about the New Economic Development and Community Relations Committee, you know, on the board. And I think there were some updates as far as the Ilian Expressway Airport, the water sewer plans, and also comprehensive land use plan, you know, to take in going south to the new, to the proposed tollway. And then talked about projects in the works, but that's basically it.
Okay. Thank you. Village planning consultant update. Matt Thomas has retired as of July first, and the president is seeking out several possible candidates, and hopefully have some, something to announce.
We interviewed two. We're trying to get a third interview, but he hasn't, I said, yesterday, I said the thirty, no, he's not responding, so roll call. You know, we should have, we had very good prospects this week, but still awaiting to go along.
The second interview, we had iPhones.
Think we might have somebody in place by the next meeting?
Be honest. I always think you can, if possible.
Okay. Considered ordinance provided for staggering terms of planning and zoning commission numbers, this was discussed at our last meeting, where seven-year terms were considered to be too long. This ordinance provides for three-year terms, so two members are up each year for reappointment. Do you want to allow, stand on that or?
The ordinance was included, basically, for some reason or another, over the years, we've had seven-year terms, or longer or less. I never, I could not determine why they were that late. I want to go back and order. We'll see if you want to call it that, but that's better terms. So the ordinance that was included, created two one-year term, three for two years, and two for three years. And then when it's all said and done, then everybody serves a three-year term after that by a static roughly. So basically, we stagger the terms, so they do always have someone left on the board in the event that, you know, three left, or whatever the case may be, just like, you know, the village board is right now. And then I believe that the... And then I believe that the idea was also to take that off the cycle of an election year. That works out that way, doesn't that?
No, we have two every three years.
It still falls out of the election year.
Every one or two every third or fourth year.
I don't mind, I thought the terms are too long. So we stagger them and then we end up with three years.
Seven years is an excessive time.
Yeah, and someone can commit that much time too. When I tried to investigate it, I couldn't determine why.
You know, don't you, you appoint these committees every year. Is that?
If I understand it correctly, if Tim would have to, I don't understand why I would have to appoint them if their term is not up. The only time they would come up is if the terms are up, like Tim went this year.
So when you appoint them, you say that they're seven years.
Therefore, whatever term there is, yes, whatever term is open, that's what the one they would fill.
The issue with you putting them ahead as an appointment is you have the right to wipe that entire board out as the president.
And that's why we stagger the terms.
But I'm saying the reason why you appoint them every year is to re-strengthen your position of that's the board, the planning and zoning board. You have the right to literally, anybody you've appointed, he has no right to, to remove him?
Once they're appointed, they're up.
It's a four, it's a four cause removal, with exception if they're absent. Was it three times?
Three times is a row. Then you can remove them without.
If they're outside of the jurisdiction, they're not a legal resident in the community. If this three meetings in a row, if they're tardy, if the, if the planning commission by majority vote, votes to either censure them or request a resignation, then action can be taken, but a newly elected mayor just can't put seven people in the business. That can't happen. And it's set up for continuity, you just can't wait.
So then what's the reason for reappointment every time?
They're not, it's just the ones.
The terms that are up.
Right. We showed a whole list of who's on there. It'd be really, well, we're only appointed, in the past we've only appointed one, now we'll be appointed two.
We may have gone through the whole.
We go through the whole list of who's agreed to have on that board. And I think that's what's causing the, the unknown.
But we're going to correct it with this.
Okay, let's take a motion approving ordinance number one-one-nine-two. What was that answer? One-one-nine-two. First staggering terms of planning, zoning commission numbers.
Second.
Motion number four, second, any questions to the motion? All in favor? I'm sorry.
Really? Coleman?
Yes.
Myers? Yes. Aaron? Yes. Clarence?
Yes.
Same thing about it is I got it written down right in front of me.
Dance more touring update. Since the last board meeting, the village attorney has provided an opinion that solid fences once erected by permit of the village become illegal non-conformal use if the pool is removed from the property. This takes care of those parcels having private fences after a pool is removed, however, the fence cannot be replaced with another private, private fence. There still appears to be an issue of how the back, that the swing poles located in the rear triggers the alarms for privacy fence. Bill, the president wishes to get a specific part of this order reviewed by the committee to determine if privacy fences should be linked with the swing poles.
I have a question. Prior to the election, the board approved the installation of the six-foot, I think it was a six-foot fence, privacy fence? And it was stipulated that the guy has to put a pool in or that fence has got to go down. His fence is up, is it now or not? Now is it a?
No, it was conditionally approved for that fence.
So if he puts a pool in and rips it down the following year, he's legal?
Yes. You want the condition as long as it's by July one of next year.
Something like that.
Or that day was, he puts the pool up and he was satisfied that condition and then that's the end of the law, if you say.
Because in the, in the past, when this has come up, we've instructed the residents that when they remove that pool, the fence goes with them. So this opinion is totally different than what we've been informing residents. When I sat out there, it goes back that far of the interpretation of the fence and the pool are joined at the hip. Now the fence that you were concerned about, I did look at that. And while the lower portion is a privacy fence, the height of the fence, the solid form portion of it, if it's four feet, they're lucky. And then you put on the top, they're not even five foot. So I wouldn't call that a privacy fence.
And that's my whole point and that's why I'm asking that with the, what has occurred within the last couple of months, I think as the committee should sit down, we should talk about that. And that's why I would be asking Gail to have a committee meeting and your flip-flopping role, so I don't know if you want to have it all tonight.
Probably not.
We'll be there all night. And we can certainly add things, it's just the way that the current ordinance reads that.
It's based on space.
But you know, we're lenient too. We say, well, go ahead, put up the fence and then put up the pool. Can't, can't we say put up the pool first?
You didn't have to allow that fence the way that, to me, I think it was.
Yeah.
You didn't have to allow it that way. The condition is the pool has to be there to allow the fence in.
But wasn't the mind, the issue that was brought up in the gentleman's general, that should the privacy be hinged on a pool in this day and age? And if you remember right, the sense that I've got from the planning and zoning member that night was encourage him to say, yes, I'm going to put up a pool, so he can put up his fence. Why have the requirement if the person sitting on the planning and zoning is going to try and, he's trying to say, say yes, you're going to put up the pool and you're going to get up the fence. That's why I say I think I would like the committee to discuss it, see if we can come to consensus and then present it to the board and then go from there.
But the question is, why is the pool triggered the solid fence?
Exactly. And not only that, is that you really want to allow the solid fence that is pictured across the street from where the one we were going to tax and tear it down, when actually the fence that was going to come down, again, it's only my opinion, was much more attractive or was more or less intrusive than what was going to be allowed. I think that was my point. And that's why I think we need to sit down, we need to think this through again.
Let me, let me give you, there's a reason why the, the pool triggers a privacy fence. The, the reason why you want a privacy fence around a pool is to stop the kids from trying to get in the pool, because if there's no adult nearby, kids drown. So the idea of privacy is, of the privacy fence on a pool is to create a barrier, you know, out of sight, out of mind. So if the kids don't see a pool, they're not going to try to get in there.
But they're going to know where that pool's in there. The privacy fence, I don't, I don't think the privacy fence is there for that. I think it's so people can't see what's going on.
Only if your pool's that great, if your pool's elevated, people are going to see it all day long.
But I'm just saying, you don't need a solid fence to protect the pool.
Correct.
The reason, the reason why.
Why do we require a?
The reason why it was done so long ago was to minimize the attractiveness of the pool. That's what it was there for. What people are doing is they're using the pool to get the privacy fence. It's not the pool, the privacy fence is there for the pool, it was there originally. But if I can get a privacy fence, all I got to do is slap a pool in there, I'll do it. And people started flipping it around, getting to that point.
Right.
So that's why it was done that way. But before this ruling from the attorney, the position of the, of the village has always been when that pool goes, so goes the fence. And it's not, if the fence comes down and you can't put another one up, because I can guarantee you, anybody who has a privacy fence that because of a bad windstorm has fallen apart, they're going to say, I already had it. And I'm putting that back up again. And unless you're going to sit on everybody's doorstep, they're going to put a brand-new privacy fence back up.
What that ordinance was passed, I don't know if any of you were on board at that time, but half of the people thought privacy fences should be allowed in the backyard. Never have. Said in a way that it shouldn't. So this is how they compromised. It's the only way they can come up with a compromise. I think that's what happened. The issue is, do you or do you not allow privacy fences in the rear yard? That should be the issue. Period. Don't worry about pools or anything like that. Do you or do you not want privacy fences in the rear yard? And that's a discussion.
Because of all, all the, the stipulations you have to make to get that a privacy fence, I think you're causing yourselves more trouble than it's worth. You can make it a lot easier and accomplish your same goal. And once again, that's why I'm asking the committee is what is the goal you're trying to meet? And let's see if we can meet it, but in a much easier way rather than burdening the planning and zoning sitting here saying, if you want a pool, don't you? I mean, this is actually happening.
I, I think we ought to get rid of the privacy fence altogether.
Okay, and I, and I think, I think that's the other intent, is you don't like this solid privacy fence, which that was my other point, and then I repeated again. And, and that's what you're trying to prohibit, but yet you allow the pool. But yet if you allow that type of fence that I'm referring to, that's much more attractive.
Oh, it is.
It still had a quarter gap between, you know, and so on and so forth, and that's why I'm asking it all to review.
It doesn't have the non, the standard fence separation, therefore it falls into a privacy fence. But if you look at that fence, your first thought is, that's not a privacy fence. It's, like I said, it's three and a half, four feet tall, if it's lucky. Then it's got the scalping on top. You literally can walk down that sidewalk and look right into that area.
Who's fence is that you're talking about?
The guy that we almost forced to take it out. It's, it's on the, it's, it's right next to Bill's.
Yeah, but by definition, it's still a privacy.
No, 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 no. It's by definition, the separation provides you with a privacy fence. Height is no longer a requirement for privacy. Privacy fencing, as we define it in this village, is a separation between slat to slat. That's what it is. Height is no barrier. In this guy's situation, I mean, our biggest concern with a privacy fence has always been, if an issue happens in the backyard, we want to make sure that the police officers, one, their safety is a primary goal of this village. Two, that they can provide, adequately provide a safety to the residents. That guy's fence, if we don't have every officer being able to jump over the top of that one, including Jeff, we've got a problem. That fence is not that tall. So they would be able to, well, that's, they would be able, you just go through it. They would be able to. Now, years ago, the issue about the privacy, no privacy is because of what Ronnie talked about earlier. The idea of the residents of this village is a community. When you start building walls, you start creating separation of residents. That was the reason, I'm not dictating either way, but that was the original reason and philosophy of the five or the earlier ones that voted against it. Because they didn't want this building of walls and separation of a small municipality. So that's kind of why they got to the agreement that, okay, if you've got a pool, we want a layer of, of separation from the kids so that it's, it's not, you know, if you, if you put a lock on something, a robber's going to go by it, they're not going to try to break through it, they're going to go for the easy target. Same with kids. They're not going to try to jump over a fence to get there. If they can get to another pool, that's why they'll go. That's why they were doing it. Privacy, great, we'll do it that way. If you want it, it's, there's a reason for it. There is the reason and separation of mindset of to have privacy fences in the village and not have.
So Scott, you're saying that privacy, you don't want the solid fence?
You don't want.
But a fence?
A fence.
Fence, but not privacy.
Fence, but I don't, I don't believe in a solid fence.
And I still think that was the intent, that's why as a committee, between two of us, three of us, wherever else that comes, we could talk and then we could hash out some of these things rather than have a long detailed, you know, conversation here, we can present it to the board and then at least we would have most of the, half of the board, board and board consensus at that point.
And if you, if you want a privacy fence, you can figure out why, they can still go for the special use.
Of course.
Why do you want it?
Right. And along that time, along in your committee too, I would ask that we maybe talk about the, the referral process for the, the variances and so on and so forth, whether or not we want to continue the same way or not.
One question. That meeting between you two guys and him, is that going to be an open meeting?
It's a public meeting, I have, they have to post it so anybody can come. That's the, if, ironically, when we just read the committee, I believe there's a provision in there that all committee reports have to be posted anyways and we can not definitely that necessarily. And I would ask that if you do call a committee meeting, that you go ahead and do post it so that if in fact I or any one of the other board members, they can attend, they can legally do so without any problems.
That's what Jonathan did on that.
Right.
But I think it should be just a cart watch. Yeah.
Decision that all, all committee meetings should be posted. And then I think there is, would be requirement to have some type of minutes thereafter.
Well, we shouldn't require the board members, because it does notify and post. Posting means you put the note up at the village hall.
It has to be posted to be a public meeting, because we're going to.
But notify the board members, we should go to the next step, notifying that this meeting is.
Again, I, I think, I like the idea of notifying everybody, but as, as this board knows, sometimes when you get too many people in the room, you can't decide anything.
It goes over.
The intent is, we go over, the intent to is trying to resolve some of these issues at committee level.
There's a designated committee.
In committee, to then commit a recommendation, recommendation to the village board and say why are they making this recommendation? And then inform the village board at that.
Those Brian's bookshops on Saturday would involve all the board members.
Correct.
Well, that, and you know what, I'd have.
Seven hours is. Seven hours already is.
And believing, I emphasize, I'm not trying to stop anybody from going to a meeting, it's just that, like I say, you get too many people in the room, you just can't decide, you get too many opinions and the, the committee just can't make a recommendation.
Do I need to have an open meeting with committee members?
Only if you two applaud, if, if it's, if Greg wants to attend or any other board member wants to attend. You've got, you've got a majority and you have to.
That was the problem after the end of Paul's term, is he wanted to participate in committee votes. He had a committee problem with that because he's the majority of the court. And if you and Gail just meet, have a meeting and discuss.
No issue.
That's not an open meeting because it's just two of, of a majority, which is four, which is three. A majority of a court is three in this case, is that right? Now Greg participates in that discussion.
You've hit a court.
Majority of the court.
So now if, if Greg's there or the rest of the board is there, you're at a court.
Yeah.
If he's there, it's just as bad as having all of us there. And that's why I like, if, if Greg's talking to one of us or one of us is, is out in public talking to another member about village stuff, another board member cannot approach. You instantly violate them.
I, I also feel if we're posting a meeting, that other board member should be notified because another bad situation is a resident come to you and say, oh, I heard there was a committee meeting at the village hall the other night and they discussed such and such. You don't know about it, then you get irritated. So I think we need to notify you, doesn't mean you have to come to the meeting. And that's why PCC meetings now, you're going to be getting PCC packets.
Electronic.
The intent is, is I'm trying to increase communication so that everybody is more informed so that when in fact somebody comes up to you, you are aware of something, maybe we can't hit it all, but we're, that's what we're trying to work on, we've talked about that among staff. And that's exactly what we're doing and that's why we're saying they had a committee meeting, then take some type of minutes. We eventually get the minutes to have a synopsis of what happened that night and you'll know exactly what's going on.
And I believe in that PCC package, that facade picture was in that. It was.
I don't know, I don't believe in the facade picture was in the package.
I don't think it was.
No, he handed, but Bob, he handed. Let's not redash it. No, 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 no. He handed that out. Let's not redash it. Bob, he handed that out at the meeting. It was not in the package.
I never got one of those colored.
Well, you had one, but then you gave it away. Well, you had one, but then you gave it away.
I might have.
I think I went to Caddy for the minutes.
Next thing.
Consider motion authorizing installation of a sidewalk east of sixty-two Ball Eagle Lane to Cardinal Creek Boulevard using MGM escrow funds. There's a common lot between sixty-two East Ballin and Parkway to Cardinal Creek Boulevard, resulting in a gap of sidewalk about twenty feet. Public Works suggested using the escrow money to complete this small segment of walkway to link it to the junior high path on the other side of Cardinal Creek Boulevard, which the local concrete, concrete contractor would be, would be hired to install the sidewalk.
But is that, you suggest-
Would I hire?
But that's the ease of that new building, is it? That you can house-
Yes, yes, it is. Only thing that's there right now is a brand each from the road.
It'll never get done if we get through.
Okay, so I'll make a motion authorizing installation of sidewalk east of sixty-two Ball Eagle Lane to Cardinal Creek Boulevard using the MGM escrow funds.
Second.
Motion on the floor, and second, any questions to the motion?
Yes, do you have any deal with the prices?
Under a thousand, probably.
Oh, yeah, it'd be under a thousand.
It's about, what, twenty, thirty feet?
We might as well pay for Mr. Attorney, is this appropriate use of money, escrow fund?
Yes.
Okay.
We're hairfiling it, we're heavy air dog right here. We had, because Bob, it's, Bob, it's common area, there's no, there's no resident that's gonna be able to put that in, it's, it's part of the-
That's, this is one of the reasons why we need to keep the escrow money just in like this, where it can pop up within the next ten, twenty.
We would never have thought about this until that house went out.
But you have to- You know, when Buddy and I want to investigate, I bet we'll find more like this one.
Oh, yeah, you will.
That's common property.
There was a motion, and there was a side roll up.
Waylon?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Clarence?
Yes.
Claire?
Yes.
Consider proposal amount of four thousand nine hundred seventy dollars to the suburban, from suburban Seacoast to make three hot patch repairs to streets in the Antucket Cove subdivision with use of the Antucket escrow funds. Two of the largest patches produced to the water daily could prepare after leaking detection to the food, and the third is elimination of the grassland and installation of an asphalt along Eagle Lake Road, which was requested, which were requested by some resident in the HOA. Any questions on that one? No questions? I'll make a motion, um, authorizing the amount of four thousand nine seventy from suburban Seacoast to make the three hot patch repairs to the streets in the Antucket Cove subdivision with use of the escrow.
Second. Motion on the floor, seconded. Any questions to the motion? Roll call.
Clarence?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
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 It's clear.
Public Safety Trust, you're clear.
Yeah, Police Department wants to report as a closer review. Um, results of Fourth of July Festival of Public Safety Issues.
No issues to report. Um, I'd say it was a fairly light, as far as, uh, activity and incidents. Um, when there were any incidents, they were handled quickly, effectively. We did have some assistance from Steger Esda with our traffic control. It seemed to expedite the cars out a little quicker, it was probably about eleven twenty, eleven twenty-five that we had all the traffic cleared out, where there weren't, wasn't any standing traffic or parking lots out there. But it went well this year, I'm pleased with it.
Very good. Um, mosquito abatement update, Buddy?
Uh, it's, uh, spraying's going great. Last Thursday was a perfect night to be spraying, you know, it hung in the air really well. Uh, two other things I have is, I was informed by Will County that they were in excess of, um, Altisoid tablets. So, uh, we, we usually get a couple boxes from them every year, um, from, from the county health department. So, I think we should be getting, I asked for twelve of them, they're like two hundred and sixty bucks a box. So, we'll see what we get. Um, the other thing is, is that, you know, once again, a requirement for our NOI, um, hopefully the residents hear this, that they need to be aware that because of all the rain that we have had, the ground is still somewhat saturated, and it does help promote, uh, the growth of the mosquitoes. So they need to realize that if they're going out between dusk and midnight, they wanna, um, put deed on to prevent getting, you know, bitten up. Um, also, they need to make sure that there's no tires or, uh, empty canisters laying in their backyard, so they're not accumulating any water. They have bird baths, they wanna dump those things and, uh, clean them out regularly, so, um, to prevent the growth of the mosquitoes.
I don't know if you guys have sat outside, but we need to tell you, there's nothing like this. A lot of programs working, who my wife sits outside, there's one bug, she's in the house.
What, the Altisoid tablets also go in the catch and basin?
Yes.
Okay.
Item number five, consider a proposal to replace the Gould Street siren at the cost of eight, nine thousand eight hundred fifty-nine dollars from Granite Communications. The Gould Street siren only froze up after twenty-two years of service during the drill, tornado drill test. We have received the attached proposal to replace the siren from our maintenance vendor and an explanation of why this option should be pursued. Since this is an unbudgeted item from the general fund, staff proposes to use, use a portion of the eighty-six thousand five hundred and twenty in capital improvement contributions to pay for this replacement. We need to have the coverage at the end of the, at this end of the community. The other siren at Church Road was installed in two thousand and two, and was only eleven years old. Chief, you know anything about this?
Yeah, yeah. Let me just say, it started off with about a couple months ago, it wasn't activating on our tornado drills. Then it would activate. Um, when they came out to do their maintenance, they, uh, that's when they did the inspection on the chopper motor, that's what turns a siren, and found that it did have some damage to it. They can't say specifically that it was lightning damage, it could have been, but being the age of the motor, it is defective. So what we have now is a siren that may or may not work when you activate it, because of how it rotates. This last siren test, it did not activate. It rotated, but you didn't have a sound. Next time, it may have a sound. But what they're saying is, is, is defective, and every time we do use it, it's gonna burn it even more, which doesn't matter, because it needs to be replaced. What they're saying is, they can replace the motor, but to replace the motor, they gotta remove the entire head off, take it to their shop, take the motor out, rebuild it or put a new one in, then they gotta come back and put it back on site.
With the crane.
Which means you gotta bring a crane here, not once, but twice. So they said, we, we, 'cause I asked them, well, could you give me a spec on replacing it? Says, we're not even gonna give you a cost on that, because it's not even close, why would you replace it? Let's say it was a thousand dollars cheaper, why would you do that with no warranty, when you can have a brand new one with a five-year warranty? They just said it wasn't cost effective to repair or replace this chopper motor.
That, that siren was originally in Hunter's Park, at Gatlaua and Miller, that network was, by the bridge there.
Yes, yeah, originally by Gatlaua and Miller.
And then when Hunter's Chase went in, and put a new siren up on Church Road, and moved this one to the water tower.
Where are the water towers located?
Right at the base, it's on its own pole, right at the base of the town. You know when it got whacked, right?
That's what I'm thinking.
No, there's no doubt in my mind. But you can't prove, and it's old, let's face it.
Well, I mean, everything that was in that area got hammered, I'm surprised this one didn't get hit. There's nothing in that building that didn't get hammered by what happened there in that strike.
Yeah, blow the fuck-
So, I, I'm thinking it is related, whether they think so or not. You can have motors that last over fifty years. There's power plants in this, in this country that are over fifty years old, still running with motors that have never been replaced. So, this is directly related to that strike that hit well by, or well for.
I, I don't think we have any questions but to replace it.
You've got, you've got, the issue you have right now is, you, you really don't have time to debate, you're, you're in the middle of tornado season.
Yeah. How soon can they get it, uh, get it done?
Soon as I give them the word, they said they can, uh, have it done fairly quick.
Now, Chief, when they're gonna come and replace it, so they're gonna get it so it works with our existing system while the initiation and all that?
Yes, the, the, to work with our system, not just radio control.
But they're gonna make sure that all works?
Yeah, they said everything that's already in place matches up to this new one. It just, it's, it's almost the same thing, just a newer model, a little bit louder, has better range.
Louder. Three dB. A lot louder.
A little bit.
Three dB. It is a lot louder.
I don't think we have a choice. Public Safety, it's, it's, it's-
Chief, are you the mediator then, with this public?
I can facilitate this, yes.
Use your new S D coordinator, Ron, to make sure that siren gets fixed.
That's sort of confidence, Ron.
Uh, do we, want a motion on this?
Yeah.
Uh, okay, I'd like to make the motion to replace the Gould Street siren at the cost of eight, nine thousand eight hundred fifty dollars from, from Granite Communication, and, uh, capital fund from the eighty-six thousand five hundred and twenty in capital improvement contribution fund.
Second. The motion on the floor, and second, any questions to the motion? Roll call.
Waylon?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Clarence?
Yes.
Yes.
Any questions of the chief or myself? If not, that completes my report.
Public Works, trust you clear.
Uh, the two thousand thirteen road resurfacing, uh, has been completed, uh, the project is now closed. Um, there's some minor seating and black dirt issues that are going on right now, some of it. We received a letter from the postmaster thanking the village for making their repairs in front of the post office. They're seeing a major change, and people are very satisfied with what was done. Uh, Maxwell Street Water, uh, main replacement. Uh, with the exception of spreading some place, uh, piles full of spoils and then, this project is also completed.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that was done.
Yes, it was.
Late pile.
Done last week.
So we're pretty much completed, all the way through. Excellent. Uh, Water and Sewer Department monthly reports are also enclosed, and as well as the Water and Sewer Billing Registry. Another item that came up, and that, uh, we're gonna talk about some of this other discussion that took place during the twentieth meeting of the, uh, Public Works Committee, uh, there was discussion concerning an update to the Sewer and Water Master Plan, uh, for how far we're going to cover, and it's consistent with what we've always been discussing, is we would overlay the village's coverage to follow the schools up, the school, uh, feature school district zone. So I make a motion authorizing the update of the Water and Sewer Master Plan of the village, covering the entire feature school district.
Second. Motion on the floor, and second. Any questions to the motion? Roll call.
Clarence?
Uh, yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Wait.
Yes.
Make a pause for one second.
You turn the heat in. You really want it?
Oh, I'm, I'm-
She's freezing.
You're freezing.
So imploding. So many ladies are freezing, I think.
Not, they just turned her.
Maybe you got a little while ago, she might have turned her.
What I, what I thought you were gonna ask, you understand that with that motion, you offer a fifty thousand for this?
And we've talked about that before.
Okay, so make sure to avoid it.
Oh, George will fall asleep, because it's so hot here.
But we still want to-
Nice character. You make some other committee. The next item is concerning to, to achieve some of the work that's going on for the village. Uh, it's concerning the, uh, removing Church Road from, from the surface transportation plan, um, and, uh, looking to re, uh, rehabilitate the feature of the, of Penfield Street from Dixie to Gould Street as part of the STP. So, uh, the reason we're doing this is right now, um, Church Road, there's not a lot of development going to the other end of Church Road. The base that was done and the additional lift provided us enough capability that Church Road will pretty much sustain itself. Um, but Penfield Street is one that's gonna need to be worked on. Uh, there's a lot of work that needs to be done to resolve the issue on Penfield Street, so we wanna move our focus to that. So, I make a motion authorizing the removal of Church Road from the recert, from the surface transportation plan, and the inclusion, uh, inclusion, uh, total rehabilitation of Penfield Street from Dixie Highway to Gould Street is part of the STP plan.
Motion on the floor, and second, any questions to the motion? Any questions? Roll call.
Waylon?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Clarence?
Yes.
Yes. Uh, real quick summary of what took place during the Public Works meeting, there was a lot of discussion about repairing all the roads in the village, possible, uh, loans to, to achieve that, the issue with doing that, um, discussion about the sewer plant permit, um, replacing water mains, employee safety, we're looking at doing toolbox chats, um, to increase safety on a daily basis to the employees. Uh, skater, tree removal, I mean, it was, it rained everywhere. Jonathan made sure that I was fully engaged in what was going on with Public Works. So, it was a very good meeting, a lot of good discussion. So, I, I think it went well. Uh, any other questions? Like, you wanna add anything? You good?
No, other than safety meetings, now that the fourth is, uh, we already have all the material, it will be in high gear, uh, probably this Friday, I'll have the first one.
And we had to notice, Buddy's called a special meeting, uh, probably with the mayor first, maybe with Public Works meeting later, but we are seeing evidence now, not only ash board infestation and trees dying on our parkways, but also maple skirt, is that correct?
Yeah, I didn't wanna be the first one to, but you're gonna have, uh, you're gonna see a lot of trees come down here in the near future.
What is maple skirt?
Yeah, what's that?
Uh, you know, if you look at them, you'll see that there's, the easiest thing I can say is, they, they kinda start, um, splitting, and they'll, like, uh, get a blister on it or bubble out.
Yeah, the leaves just fall out.
Yeah, and it just-
Whole portions of the tree just dies.
Wow.
Kind of like the Chelmsley's.
We have a lot of that going on in town.
I've seen three trees with it.
Really?
In the parkway.
You wouldn't notice-
Old side or, uh, newer side of town?
Woodward.
On Woodward?
Yeah.
And it's, it's, it's disheartening, you know, it's tragic.
That's, that's, those are established trees.
Yeah.
Or, you, now that you're aware of what you're looking at, you'll, you'll notice that it'll be a lot more prevalent.
Are you also noticing the, uh, ash?
Oh, yeah.
All over, all over town?
Yes, all the way from your sub, and right down the street from you. In fact, your neighbor.
Once the ash board gets in that tree, it's got three years before it goes. What the, the, the money would take to invest in treating those trees every year, you're gonna lose them anyway.
The issue's gonna be that, and, and we've called, because we've got an ash in our backyard, and getting that in to do the treatment? They don't service feature. We've called five different people, they do not service feature. So if you have an ash, you need service it yourself.
We just wanna give you a heads up.
No, my forces loaded with, uh, the ash board too, because I was going down, um, what's that mean, street there? A soft trail, soft trail. Oh my gosh, the trees are just dying like a disease.
Peatone spent fifty thousand this summer to renovate the cash.
Answer to our report.
And economic development community real issues committee, Trystee Meyer?
Brand new committee, we have that, you have a chance to meet, and we have no report this month.
Well, I don't want you to feel left out, can you also call a committee meeting?
Yes.
And post it so that we can sit down, and we can brainstorm a little bit. Any other?
Nope, that's all, yeah.
Go with present report, the OAN Expressway update. Bob and I attended a meeting, uh, there was a, the OAN Corridor Committee, uh, which is of, how many members?
Four and a couple, five total.
Five total, uh, which the county received a, next month, a grant-
Half a million.
Half a million dollar grant, which they're gonna share to the municipalities. Municipities are going to get thirty thousand dollars, of which we, our managing grant would be six thousand five hundred dollars.
We have to pay sixty-two fifty first, then we're gonna get thirty thousand back. If that makes any sense, but then satisfies the, for our late conference planning.
Second grant, and then basically it's the, to involve the, uh, communities along the OAN Expressway to discuss economic development, master plan in the future, and so on and so forth, of which they have a meeting coming up. When was next meeting?
We didn't schedule one, because she was going to get the county to approve the program, and she was gonna schedule a meeting. We didn't schedule one because she was going to get the county to approve the program. Then she was gonna schedule a meeting.
And if you notice, Bob's notes were in there where he added some notes and some recommendations back to the Illiana Corridor. Uh, for changes. At that last meeting, we also learned that Wilmington is, came up with a plan possibly run a water line from Wilmington at the K T River all the way down to here to supply water for a Jawa, which a Jawa is.
Joint Action One, which I knew that.
So, a Jawa, which, um, I'm not so sure if this was, uh, done to stop Aqua Illinois or object to Aqua Illinois. But anyways, they have a plan that they can run water all the way out this way, which was enclosed in their packet. And we'll inform you more as time goes on. South suburban airport, uh, the only thing that we have is, again, we've attended a couple meetings, which the director of transportation for I D A was there, Ann Schneider. Uh, the good news is, is that at two of the meetings and in the legislation, she had indicated that she is going to sit down with the one-on-one with the five communities involved surrounding the airport, which are Moni, Peatown, Beecher, University Park, Anne Crete. Um, she's provoked with her promise. She contacted Beecher, asked them to arrange a meeting so that she could come out and sit down with those communities so that we can express our concerns, uh, not only with the economic development or the development district around the airport or the, uh, other impact concerns such as noise, possibly curfew in flights or, or wherever else there may be involved in the airport. But she is coming out to sit down with us and go from there. We have an intergovernmental meeting scheduled for August twenty-ninth, seven fifteen P M. Comment is gonna come out, uh, who gives a presentation on the smart grid and some of the things that we can or cannot do as far as notifying the power fitters and so on and so forth. Uh, is I D A coming to that meeting or not?
Um, it's my understanding that the Illiana people went to the township meeting and the township board invited them to come and talk. So they might be showing up, that you Steve Shelby. And that's fine. They gave us an update. But we didn't want this meeting to be updates. We wanted the various taxing bodies to have candid discussions at this meeting. There's gonna be a lot of new faces around the table with all these new government folks. So they're just not trying to meet each other and just talk about issues.
The plan is just to have the Illiana people come in, provide an update and they're done.
That's what I would expect them to do with fish.
And this Steve Shelby is I D A engineer.
He's been here.
Yeah, and very, uh, very thorough.
Yes, but you have to remember, a lot of, there's a lot of newly locally elected fishermen that don't even know that, how this intergovernmental works. So we're gonna have to bear with these new, new guys for a while.
Strategic playing process you received at, uh, in your mailboxes. Bob is looking for the, uh, survey to be back to him by July twenty-ninth. And basically from those surveys, they'll begin discussing that at a workshop later in the fall, probably.
Now, don't be offended, people, if on July twenty-ninth, I start counting you for surveys and you say, I turned mine in. I'm not gonna know who did and who didn't. I'm just gonna know I don't have all eight. I don't know how long it will be. You use your fear pressure to get your cohort, maybe get your packages. I don't know how long it's gonna be.
I won't be deficient. I won't be a run.
Okay, it's not gonna work if, if not everybody fills out their survey. Everybody needs to fill it out.
And we discussed this. We find that it's important to involve the new trustees because opinions of certain things may have changed with the Illiana Expressway and the downtown area because of the airport now seems to be rolling along with the Illiana and so on and so forth. So we felt that this was important.
And if you wanna request an extension of time?
Don't answer Bob. Don't answer.
Just tell me. I need more time and I have to quit outing everybody for another week or two. But we do need to get all the minutes.
Okay.
This was a problem a few years ago. It was a scrapwork. I didn't know who it was. I got my ass.
Yeah, not him. Okay, I would like to, someone to make a motion to go into the executive session to consider a contract with Teamsters number seven hundred, which is the police center of the world, seven hundred, which is the police contract, and consider employment agreements with the village administrator, office manager, chief of police, superintendent of public works, and also to discuss pending or possible litigation in the future. So when we come back, we will take action. Second. The motion on the floor. And second, go call.
Clarence?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Yes.
Whalen?
Yes.
Sir, buddy?
Any options for the word? Eric, anyone?
So who?
Second, go call.
I have no idea.
Go ahead.
Jay?
Scott? And Claire?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Holden?
Yes.
Claire?
Yes.
For the record, I would vote in the order of my state one.